We'll call the city council regular meeting to order for Monday, May 19th, 2025. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember Bernat.
Here.
Councilmember Lean.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
All right, unless there's any changes to the agenda, I would seek a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jake. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item 5.1 is our, under our announcements, are a few retirement recognitions. David?
Mayor and council, tonight we have the privilege of recognizing the service of two individuals who have served the Farmington community for a combined 45 years. Jeff Jones has been a member of the Public Works Department since 2003, and Gary Rutherford has served the Farmington Police Department since 2002. We do have certificates of retirement to present for each one of them. This is kind of a stopgap measure, as I think 20 years of service deserves more than a certificate, but we're still working on what that more formal thing will be. So they're gonna get certificates, and then they'll get something nicer later on down the road. Jeff could not be with us tonight, but I would still like to ask Public Works Superintendent Eric Whitmer if he'd come up and say a few words about Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I would take a few moments to recognize that 22 years that Jeff has served the city of Farmington, he started his career in 2003 in the sanitation department. After running a route for a year and a half, he moved over to the Public Works Department, and he's served there the last 20 years. A fun fact I learned just today is that he's had the exact same plow route all 20-plus years, which is, it kinda speaks to the consistency of person he is, actually. So, that was very interesting to me. He's taken a lot of years of experience with them when he goes. I would take this opportunity to recognize and thank him for his years of service and wish him the best in retirement. So, thanks Jeff.
And now on to Gary. I'll first like to invite up Lynn to say a few words, followed by Deputy Chief Seaman.
Chief Rutherford. Chief Rutherford started his law enforcement career in 1995 in the city of Lake Crystal. In 96, Gary was hired by the Norfield Police Department. Seven years later, he was hired by the Farmington BD as a patrol officer. After being an officer on the Farmington Police Force for five years, Gary was promoted to sergeant. In 2019, Gary was appointed and took his oath as police chief. Gary was exactly the leadership that Farmington needed. To put it in simple terms, Chief Rutherford truly cares about the people of Farmington. Chief Rutherford created community policing before it was a thing. Chief, I want to thank you for your leadership and support you have provided Farmington, but also to thank you for your advice and true support to the entire team and myself. We wish you the very best in your well-deserved retirement.
Mayor, council members, and community members. Tonight is a proud but bittersweet moment, as we honor the retirement of Chief Rutherford, a man who has given so much of himself to the city and this department, and to all of us lucky enough to have served alongside him. Chief Rutherford was one of my FTOs when I started in this profession. He helped me, he helped shape my foundation as a young officer, not just through what he taught, but through how he carried himself, with quiet confidence, compassion, and strength. Later, he became my SWAT team leader, and then our commander. When he spoke, we listened, not out of fear or formality, but because he had earned our respect through action. He has been my chief, my mentor, and my closest professional guide. He saw something in me I wasn't always sure I saw in myself. He promoted me to sergeant, and then to deputy chief, and now I have the honor and responsibility of stepping into a role he is leaving behind. It's hard to put into words what it means to follow someone who has led with so much heart. He has given this department a legacy of service, humility, and steady leadership, values I will carry forward every day. Chief, you've been a true friend. I want you to know your influence, won't retire with you. You've left your mark, and we'll keep building on the strong foundation you created. Thank you for the example, the support, and the trust. Enjoy this next chapter, you've more than earned it.
So Gary, before you sit down, you wanna do this now, or do you wanna do this later?
Uh, let's do it now, so that we can release anybody that's here for this.
Okay. Now, you know I'm gonna make you do this again on Friday. Neat.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the public, members of the Farmington PD that are here past and present, it's hard to, hard to put into words, you know, a 30-year career, but I'll do my level best and I'll keep it short. Almost seven years ago, I stepped into this role, and I, it was a role I wasn't really actually looking for, prior to that. But when I stepped into it, I did, like I do with most things, I stepped into it hard and I mashed the gas, and I've had the, I've had my foot against the firewall for the better part of seven years, and I'm a little bit tired, to be perfectly honest with you. It's been a true honor and a privilege to work with this council and councils before. This is an amazing city staff that you have, and I am humbled beyond measure to have been one of the, just the most recent in a long line of outstanding chiefs for the, for the Farmington Police Department. The chief that actually hired me happens to be in the room. Chief Seaman Oller, thank you for, I don't wanna say stepping out and making that brave decision 23 years ago, I feel like it was a no-brainer. But I've enjoyed every minute of it. Even the hard days, I wouldn't change, I think they shaped me and our department into what it is today, and I just, I thank you all for your support. Lynn, you're an amazing boss, there's no two ways around that. I'm gonna miss working for you, for sure. I have to specifically call out my partner over the better part of the last six years, Deputy Chief Konstantinos in the room. I'm pretty sure you all would've probably had me fired after about 15 minutes, if I didn't have him by my side to, to help me through. So, thank you, Jim, and thank you to everybody else, and that's it, I said I'd keep it short, I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, if you all wanna come down, for, if the council could come down, present the certificate and a picture.
You wanna do it?
You wanna do it now, or do you wanna do that later?
We can do it at the end.
Okay, we'll have the end there.
Yeah.
Then that's all I have.
Do you wanna do comments now, or do you wanna do them during roundtable?
Let's do them now.
Do them now, all right. Steve?
Wow, I have to start, okay. You know, when I first served on the council, I served and, and Dan was our chief, and I remember when Dan left, I thought, how in the world are we gonna replace such a great leader? And another amazing individual stepped into line to take over the city, and, you know, I had no doubts when you stepped in to be our next chief. I mean, I think Nate said it best, you know, your, your leadership, you know, you have a quiet command, you have a quiet confidence, and you have given so much to the community, I mean, immeasurably. Service before self, the rotary motto, and that is truly a gift to all of us that live here. It's been an honor to be a council member and a resident with you being our chief, so thank you so much.
Jake?
It's hard to capture 20-plus-year careers in just a few short words, but Jeff and Gary both put an important job in our community over the last several decades. They both kept us safe, in a literal public safety sense, and for Jeff keeping the roads clear and keeping them safe to drive on and making sure we have water running. So, thank you both for keeping our community safe and making it a great place to live. And Gary, you know, I had a chance to work with you when I was on the school board, and you were the new chief when you were put into that job. I had time to get to know you when I was just a resident, and now I've had time to work directly with you as a city council member. And, you said it to Lynn, but you, from what I can tell, you're a great boss, and you're a great leader, from the men that, the men and women that work for you every day. So, thank you for doing that, thank you for keeping our community safe, but I also think equally is important, thank you for the, I'll call it the fun side of your job. I mean, nobody can argue that Toys for Town flourished over the last few years, and I think that's a large part to your dedication and your department's dedication, and I think your joy that you brought to that part of the job. Hopefully next year, you'll get to come and wrap gifts, and if you're still around, I don't know what the, the road holds for you, but hopefully you'll get to enjoy it from the other perspective that we've all been able to enjoy it over the last few years.
Holly?
Oh, buddy. You know, um, prior to 2022, my relationship with police officers was more of a don't get in their way sort of situation, like do everything you can to stay out of the line of sight, right? That, that was how you wanted to operate as a citizen, that, that put you in good standing. And, and then we ended up in the same space around a due days table, and I learned so much about you as a person, and about your heart, and about how you care for Farmington, and about your love for candy. And, uh, and what it did is it completely changed my perspective of the role of policing in a community. It made it not the thing that you wanted to avoid, but the thing that you wanted to be able to get to know on a level that put you in a space where you felt comfortable, and like, it was a place that you could go, and, and as though these are individuals that you can connect with, not on a did I do something wrong level, but on a let's work together level. And that is entirely because of the connection that we were able to form over those months, and the couple of years that followed, and now the years that have followed that. And what I love most about that is it's something that I've been able to pass on to my kids about the way that they can interact with the individuals that keep them safe in their community. And so, I am sad, because every time someone awesome leaves, I get sad, but I'm also so happy for you and excited for you in this next season that you've got, and you will be dearly missed, and I also know that you will be replaced by an awesome individual who loves the community the same way you have. And I, you better be coming around every once in a while, even if not all the time, just to pop in and say hi. But thank you, thank you for that connection, thank you for making all the things that have been stressful over the years less stressful, or difficult over the years less difficult. I appreciate it.
Like always, it's hard to compete with you guys on, on this department, but I'll do my best. When I was in high school, I had a coach, it was just this legendary coach, everyone in the state knew him, he'd been around for 30 years, and he retired, and the new coach kinda came in and said something to the effect of, how do I feel big shoes this big? And he said, I don't. I think that's kind of what we're dealing with here, is Gary, you're a behemoth in this community, and there is no matching it. So, I'd say to Nate, don't try. I mean, be Nate, be you, but I gotta just kinda say, I mean, you don't have to be Gary, because I don't think anybody can.
All good there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I didn't, sorry. I know. No, no, it's all good. Oh, man. It, uh, it's bittersweet, and there are a few things outside of family that do this. But that's because, for me, you're family. How I came into this in 2018 very much involved the department. I said not my community, like, I had to be a part of it. And David McKnight was insistent that we not appoint until after I had been sworn in because of what happened that fall. And it was my, it was my first formal act, if I remember correctly, but it was at that first meeting, and we've had a lot of conversations and, over the years, and talked, and I know that tonight, people talking about you is not your thing. You'd much rather just go and say thank you, and keep all the accolades and the plaques and the stuff, and, and, 'cause that's, that's who you are as a human being. You're a cop's cop. You, you believe in community first, in all ways. I've had the privilege to work alongside you in so many things, from due days and the long days of emptying trash together, to the meetings that we felt we didn't need to always sit at. Hell, I convinced you to walk for 24 hours with me, for a good cause. Like, you, you're not just a cop's cop, you're, you're a guy's guy, you're, you're the thing of the thing in all the things. You're just a goddamn good human being, all the way through. And the lessons that you've, the things you've taught your team over the years, the, the stuff that you've passed on, one of my mentors gave me a book, when I was about 22, and it's John C. Maxwell's 21 Irrefutable Laws of Leadership, and I've shared this with you, and I get to officially share it with you today. You're retired, you'll retire on Friday, we'll talk a little bit more about it at my State of the City, but I think people need to hear this, because this is, this is something that I believe you embodied every day that I met you, every day that I've known you, and every day I've been able to, to work alongside you. And it essentially says that Max Dupree, author of Leadership is an Art, declared, succession is not, succession is one of the key responsibilities of leadership, yet it is, of all the laws of leadership, the law of legacy is the one that the fewest leaders ever seem to learn. Achievement comes to someone when he or she is able to do great things for themselves. Success comes when he or she empowers followers to do great things with them. Significance comes when he or she develops leaders to do great things for them. But a legacy is created only when a person puts his or her organization into the position to do great things without them. I have no doubt that you have put the organization in a position to succeed, and for you and Krista to go and enjoy what you have worked your butt off for decades for. I could talk about you for hours, you are a mentor to me, you are a father figure to me. I appreciate you. We're all gonna miss you, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you've taught me. Thank you. God, I hate days like today.
Where'd you get that?
I don't know, I passed it on.
One more. Oh, okay, great, I'll take one.
Gotcha. All right. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is our citizen comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please feel free to come up and do so at this time. And real quickly, citizen comments are a time for anyone to address the city council for matters not on the agenda. Those speaking should state their name and their address, and limit their comments to five minutes. The city council will not engage in discussion on your topic, but those requiring a response will be responded to by the next scheduled city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Kim Lomas from Farmington.
Vicki Hagan from Farmington. May is Poppy Month for the American Legion Auxiliary, specifically National Poppy Day, which is this coming Friday, May 23rd. National Poppy Day is a day that encourages all Americans to wear a red poppy as a way of honoring the fallen and support the living heroes who have worn our nation's uniform. The red poppy is a nationally recognized symbol of sacrifice and remembrance, worn by Americans since the World War I, to honor those who served and died for our country in all wars. The Farmington American Legion Auxiliary will be distributing poppies at various Farmington businesses this week. If you see an auxiliary member, please stop by and get your poppy and wear it all Memorial Weekend. And if you see an active military or a veteran, please stop and say thank you for your service and all that you've done for our country. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you, ma'am.
She beat you to the punch, apparently.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Nate Ryan, Cambrian Way, mayor and council. This just sucks, just sucks to continue to come up here and try and talk and get a point across that just seems to just go absolutely nowhere. Last time I was up here, the mayor and I, mostly the mayor yelled, you know, it was time, and we, it was the most back and forth in a public setting that we have had. We've had back and forth in a private setting, we've had back and forth out in the parking lot, right? Not in a bad way, I don't wanna make it sound like that, but, you know, in a good way, and we've had civil, I've always been civil with conversation. And last meeting, you speaking from there was the most that we've had. And it made me realize something, because everyone else in the council was quiet. And also, tonight made me realize something, too. Every single person talked about the chief's love for Farmington, I know it's an agenda item, I probably shouldn't talk about it, but, I'm sure you'll let that pass. But everyone, you know, the chief talked about his love for Farmington, love for community, love for the people, he called them brothers, he called them sisters, just, you know, just love, and he watched out for our community. And I would like to say that by not having that back and forth, not having that civil discourse, which should've taken place, which you allowed the developer to do, that's what hurts you in the community. That's what makes you look like you don't think before you act. That's what makes you, that's what makes, it's what, what makes this side of the podium so frustrating. We don't have that civil discourse, we don't have that back and forth. Even if we came to a work session, we probably wouldn't have that, it's not allowed at a work session to communicate like that. The only way that we can talk to you is privately, right? We can't have a, a back and forth from, from this side of the podium, it's not allowed. And the mayor reminded us all last week, or two, two weeks ago, that he runs the meeting, right? He runs the meeting, somewhat accurate. The truth is, is that you all run the meeting, every single person sitting there, you all have a say. And what was really concerning to me last week is that you're all silent. You're quiet, that's not leadership. Everyone who talked about the chief's leadership talked about how great he was to talk to, how he could be confided in, what, you know, communication back and forth. And I'm concerned for all of you that you may not have that with the mayor. Does he just come down upon you and just, you know, just say, this is how it's gonna be, I run the meeting? Joe, I hope that you all understand the power that you have sitting in those seats, because from this side of the podium, I don't think, it, it doesn't look like you understand, and it doesn't look like you understand what you did to that piece of property. You all talked about communicating and, and, you know, watching out for our neighbors, whether it was the guy who plows the snow, Mr. Jeff, or whether it was Chief Rutherford, watching out for our community. Do you feel that you watched out for our community when you put in 100% industrial project 250 feet away? Can you honestly go and can you look at yourselves in the mirror and say, I watched out for my community that night? That was a good choice for my community? Can you honestly say that? Or was it a good choice for a legacy, right? The last thing that the mayor talked about was leaving a legacy, and his quote, his legacy is gonna be that we provided more tax dollars for councils to spend than any other council. Is that the legacy? Is, is that really what you wanna leave? Is that really what you want as a legacy? I don't, I wouldn't if I was in your shoes. I wanna leave a legacy like the chap, like the chief left. People depended on him, people knew that he could go and confide in him, he'd help him make good decisions. And as I started, this sucks. Our group gets smaller and smaller every single meeting. They get served with subpoenas, they get served with papers that say that the developer's gonna sue them personally, they keep getting shut down and quiet. They keep getting silenced. They're intimidated by the mayor, by all of you, because you don't listen, because you don't want that back and forth, because as soon as it's 5:01, you're told to shut up, and you're told, if you don't like it, then sue me, and sue us. That's the legacy, that's your legacy that you're leaving as a council. And again, this sucks, I don't wanna take this time away from the chief and his beautiful career, and what he's done for the city. This should be an amazing night, we shouldn't have to be here. And to be honest with you, if you would've done your jobs, and you would've watched out for the city, and you would've protected the citizens, we wouldn't have to be here. we wouldn't have to be here. I still wouldn't have to be sticking out my neck. Y'all get to pick what your legacy is.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Nick. Go on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Roundtable, Amy.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. I don't really have a report tonight, but I will say, since I get to go first for the roundtable and you've all gotten to make your comments, I'll say a thank you to the chief. I've been here with all of you only since December. But this isn't my first rodeo with, with city government or police departments. And I can tell you honestly that this, that you, Chief Rutherford, are not only just one of a kind, but you're one of the best I've, I've ever worked with. And, um, and I appreciate your good humor. And I appreciate that you told me that top potato is made here in Farmington. Thank you. I wish you all the best in retirement.
Nick?
Well, I used up all my words in that earlier comment, but I do wanna know what your favorite candy is, though.
I know, I know. Reese's.
Smart man.
Cups or pieces?
I agree.
Cups.
Cups. No. The chocolate to peanut butter ratio, we've had this conversation.
Thank you. That's all.
Holly?
So, yeah, I'm gonna not get overly emotional again. Um, I wanna point out to anybody that doesn't seem to know that the weekend coming up is Memorial Day weekend and that we do have celebrations happening here in Farmington. Uh, and so if you are in town for that, it's a beautiful way to spend a few hours of your weekend. Um, and so there is one out at the cemetery. There is a second one that usually happens shortly thereafter at the Veterans War Memorial. Uh, go to one, go to both. Um, they are fantastic. That's it for me.
Thank you. Jake?
Last weekend, there were two really cool city events. Um, I was able to attend one and was unable to attend the other. But, uh, for the Parks and Rec staff who organized both the City of Farmington and City of Empire Parks and Rec staff who organized the food truck event, uh, thank you for your hard work. From everything I've heard, it was a, a well-run and well-attended event despite questionable weather. Um, and then to the police department staff who organized the open house, that too was a well-run and well-attended event despite questionable weather. So, thank you to everybody who put those events on and thank you to everybody who attended those events.
Steve?
Um, I just wanna let Jake know that I was able to attend both events, so.
Brownie points for Steve.
Brownie points. But it was a, it was a really good event, Kelly. Um, you know, with the food truck event, it's, it's either the weather is absolutely amazing or it did what it did last weekend, which is, you know, the whole week leading up to it, it's amazing, then day of, it's just not so good. But I really appreciate the coordination between the City of Empire and Allison. Um, definitely wanna thank the police department for all the great work over the weekend. And Courtney Show with Dakota County Sheriff, State Patrol with the helicopter. Everything associated with it was, it was a great event. I know this person is not gonna be happy that I'm saying this, but I do wanna congratulate former council member Katie Porter. She decided to go back to school. Um, I think after about a 10 or 15-year hiatus and get her college degree, which I know was a really big motivation for her. Um, so congratulations to Katie and great job.
I would like to thank Jeff Jones and congratulate him on his retirement. I so appreciate seeing him when he stops by City Hall and he stops in and sees me in my office. Um, what a great person he is and we've been so fortunate to have him here at the city. Um, that's what makes the city great are the employees and, and council that we have and we work together as a great team, so. Uh, thank you. And again, Gary, we still have a week together. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley?
Uh, congratulations to both Gary and Jeff. Um, Gary, I feel proud to know you. I am going to miss you and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. David?
We've talked about this with council already. Uh, beginning Monday, City Hall will be moving to summer hours until Labor Day. So, beginning Monday, well, really Tuesday, 'cause we're closed on Monday, just reminding the people. Um, City Hall will be open from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. And then 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Fridays. Um, we, uh, even just working with our inspection staff actually believe this is gonna be a benefit even to our contractors. Um, actually gives them an extra hour in the morning when actually they prefer to have inspections. Um, as well giving some flexibility to our staff on weekends when there's, we'll see a lot of traffic here on Friday afternoons. Being cognizant of our partners with the USDA, who will still be here until 4:30 on Fridays. The building on Fridays will remain open until 4:30. Um, RR is obviously with us, be closed down, will have signage up. So if anyone comes into the lobby looking for City Hall, they'll know that there's a reason you're not seeing anyone, it's 'cause we're not here. Uh, we have begun already to communicate that. So using our social media, our website, our front desk staff has been communicating with those who come in or call as well as the inspection staff as well to be communicating that with um, contractors and, and applicants that, uh, those hours will be changing come Monday. And then with that, I also want to again congratulate Jeff on 22 years well done. And Gary, even though we only had three months, like, I guess I beat you there, Amy. I don't know if that's a win. It's been a privilege and an honor to work with you the last three months and get to know you. And I wish you the best of luck in retirement.
Deanna?
Thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, we had our Economic Development Authority meeting. And we had another one of our partners come present to us. And that was the Dakota County CDA and also Commissioner Slavik attended. But we had a really great presentation of the housing needs assessment that they've done. And then we also got to learn more about how they're serving our community specifically. So, those partner meetings, I believe, are super important for all of us. It gives us a better understanding. And it also identifies all the additional ways that we can be working together. So, that was great. We also had a discussion on our grocery study. And that is a, a topic that's near and dear to many people's hearts here in this community. And, um, thank you to the Economic Development Authority for allowing us to commission that grocery study. It is something that we are using actively to have conversations. None of that is, though, is important as, you know, what we were able to hear tonight and to celebrate you. So, congratulations, Gary. You will be missed. And you have definitely left a huge impact.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, mayor and council members. Uh, my congratulations to both Jeff Jones and Chief Rutherford on their retirement. Jeff, people like Jeff Jones are what Public Works is fueled by. I wanna thank him for getting up in the middle of the night to plow the roads, to run salt routes, uh, to respond to water main breaks, uh, to do the extra things that Public Works does to keep everything running and, and so we don't get noticed. When we don't get noticed and attention's not called to Public Works, we're doing our job. And Jeff was a huge contributor to that. Uh, his knowledge, his, his demeanor, his even keel. And he was just a real pleasure to work with. And I, I really wish him all the best in his retirement. With regard to Chief Rutherford, uh, I've been serving municipalities for almost 40 years in one capacity or another. And, uh, from a chief's standpoint, police chief, he sets the standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, tomorrow is the Open Door Pop-Up Event at Faith Church, 3:00 to 4:30 PM. And if you aren't aware, they won the Dakota County Public Health Achievement Award, uh, here in May. So congratulations to Open Door and thank you for the awesome partnership they have here in Farmington. Next Wednesday, May 28th, is the first night of Music in the Park. 7:00 PM at Roundling River Park. We have five-day forecast. Uh, they're the, the band, a classic rock cover band. So I hope to see you all on, uh, May 28th. Wanna congratulate Jeff Jones as well on his retirement. And Chief Rutherford, um, I feel like my first 13 years here, I was ripped off because you worked overnights and I worked days and I never got that pleasure to work with you. Um, so I feel like I, I should have a do-over. So maybe you can stay a little longer.
No.
I, I figured the answer was no. But the last, uh, since I've been back the last four years, um, really appreciate, uh, your leadership. Um, you are an awesome, awesome dude. And we'll definitely miss you. Um, I hope before you leave, wherever you're going, South Dakota, Tennessee, you'll come out and hang at the Senior Center. I know they talk about you quite often. And know we've kind of been in transition at the fire station, but when we reopen, I hope you'll, you'll swing by and, and hang out with them and, and don't be a stranger because we're gonna miss you. And thank you for all you've done for our department and the city and the community. Best of luck and hope you enjoy your next adventure.
Thank you. Kim?
I'm gonna echo a lot of the same. Um, congratulations to Jeff and the chief on their retirement. Um, I've only been here in less than two years and I'm gonna get emotional. It's been an emotional day. Um, but, you know, even though we don't see each other very often, 'cause you're not here at City Hall, maybe we see each other at our Monday morning meetings or at budget time, but other than that, I don't see a lot of you. But even in that short period of time, could tell your dedication and your heart. And I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Last week was a really important week for us at the PDE, it was Police Week. And, uh, we, we ended the week with, like many have mentioned, the open house. And, uh, that open house is really important to me, um, as part of the planning in the last few years, but I wasn't able to be there this year. Uh, we were fortunate, though, to have Sergeant Cassie Redmond-Palo and the rest of our staff that worked their behinds off, uh, to put on a, a really good open house. And, um, the people came out. The weather wasn't great, but we really saw just a minor decrease in numbers from previous years. So, um, thank you for everyone that came out and visited the PD and visited with our officers and met our, our beloved canine friends. It, it really is a great event for the community and it's a great event for our officers. A lot of them that don't necessarily see, um, all the support every day. We are fortunate that we get to see, uh, how we're appreciated here, but a lot of our officers that work in the evenings or, um, don't have those interactions, don't get to see that. And they really appreciate it and really is impactful for them. Um, I wanted to extend my thanks to, to Jeff Jones for what he's done for our city. It's a, it's a big career. Um, and a really great service to us. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention Chief Steve Dollar in the back there. He hired me as well, as well as our huge portion of our police department. He really laid the groundwork for where we are right now. And I'm thankful to him for that. And again, thank you, chief.
So I often see Jeff ride by through the cul-de-sac from his house downtown, riding up to the maintenance facility. And you'd think I'd learn over the years that he typically has an earbud in. And every day when I see Jeff, it's not every day I see him, but every time I see him, I'm like, Jeff, you're never gonna hear me. And I've been, I, it's like the whole home improvement, Tim and the neighbor thing. Like, I've been doing that for, I don't know, the, noticeably, like, at least the last three or four years that he's been riding. And it's, it's weird because there's a part of you that like, you know, you, like, that day all of a sudden is gone, right? Like, whether he retires and moves, stays like that, I don't know if that route's gonna be part of his deal every day anymore, but it's just, it, those are the waypoints in life that you, they seem like they're almost insignificant at the time until all of a sudden they're gone. And then when they're gone, you realize how important they actually were. Jeff, this is a very sincere thank you for everything you've done for our city for the last 22 years. Semper Fi. May you and Cheryl go and enjoy your retirement and do all the things that you've worked your butt off and plan to do. Gary, I'll save the rest of it for Friday. With that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Holly, second by Nick. Go on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned at 7:43.